Good morning. Everybody awake? There's still donuts left if anybody wants them. I saw you high school kids getting three or four to time, I can't believe that. I used to do that, I guess. Welcome to Potter County Commissioners Court Government Day. Today is April 27th and we'll start our court in just a second. But, right now I want Brad Schroeder, the Superintendent of Amarillo School District, to come and have them say a few words.
What a great day. And, the first message I have as the Superintendent for the students here, do you have a plan after high school? Alright, raise your hand if you've got one. Alright, good. You've got to have a plan. We need to thank Potter County for giving you this experience. This is a wonderful experience in county government, but it also relates to local government and it also relates to state government and national government. You know, our country was founded on a principle that we could govern ourselves. We didn't need a king or a family, royal family, to govern, but we could do it ourselves. But that takes the participation of all citizens to do that. And it takes individuals like these commissioners who will volunteer their time to make hard decisions in front of other folks. And so you're going to get a chance to really see what our country was founded on, this idea of self-governance, but you're also going to get to see that it's more than just a position. It requires work, knowledge, decision-making, and sometimes when you make a decision, it's not always the right decision for some people, so they do get angry at you sometimes. So you need to thank them for the work that they do in county government and being willing to offer their services to Potter County to make these kinds of decisions. I know you're going to have a wonderful day. I would encourage you to ask questions. I think there's a Twitter account that you're supposed to jump on, and you guys can do that, you know, technology. Overwhelming, okay? But, I want you to get the most out of this day that you possibly can, because it's a wonderful day of actual, real experience in what local government is all about. So, thank you again for Potter County, and I'm glad you all are here.
Good morning. Today is April 27th, Monday, 2015, and I call the Potter County Commissioners Court in order. If you will please stand with me, I think Leon Church is going to introduce the person who's going to give the implication today.
Yes, it's a pleasure for me to introduce Father Scott Rave. Father Scott is a native of Amarillo. He is a pastor at Saint Mary's Catholic Cathedral here in Amarillo, and we're very pleased to have him here to offer prayer.
Well, let us all pray, bow our heads. God of mercy and grace, we ask for the ability ever to thank you, to recognize the blessings that surround us. We give you thanks this morning for the beautiful rain upon which we are all so dependent in this part of the world. We thank you for the blessing of these young people who gather here and seek to grow and to learn. We thank you for this Commissioners Court, for every one of its members, as they selflessly try to give themselves in leadership for this community, for the greater good. We ask you bless our deliberations here today. Help us always to do you honor, to be honest, and to seek the good of all. But God hopefully and always help us to be conscious of those in our community who are poor and vulnerable and voiceless, that we will always consider them in our decisions and act on their behalf. So God bless us today and every day, and help us to be ever thankful of living in this community, this county, and this country where we are so abundantly blessed. We give you all due praise and thanksgiving, and ask that you help us always to honor and bless your name, for you live and reign forever and ever as a great and mighty God. Let us all say together, amen.
Okay, before we begin, I want to introduce the students that are on the stage with us today. By the way, I just want to thank all the schools for their participation in this day. I look out and see all these kids, it is wonderful to see you and to see that you have an interest in this, or either that or you just have to get out of school, one or the other. So, we'll start over here with Carrie and Dave. And Dave, do we have Brody Askins from River Road High School? Thank you, Brody, for coming today. And then go on down here with Commissioner Vaughn. Have, they changed it up on me, so. Esmeralda Ramirez from Paladura High School. Esmeralda, thank you. And then we have Commissioner Vaughn, I mean Commissioner Church, sorry. And we have Jeremy Havery, Havery, from Bushland High School. Thank you for being here, Jeremy. And then today with me, I have Azlin Burnett from, Azlin Burnett from Tascosa High School. Thank you for being here. And then with Commissioner Morgea, Dane Majock from Caprock High School. And then with, last but not least, with Commissioner Kelly, Jillian Hamilton from Amarillo High School. Thank you, Jillian. And also, over here with County Clerk's Office, we have, hang on, let me find it, Landon Tucker from Harlem Park. Thank you. Y'all give everybody a clap. Okay. Number one, approval of minutes from the April 13th, 2015 Potter County Commissioners Court meeting.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Second, we have a motion by Church, second, Morgea. Favor, raise your hand. Five zero. Number two, vouchers. Consider and act upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the County Auditor's Office for the period of April 8th through April 22nd, 2015. Checks number 161713 through 161987, and wire transfers 537 through 542 in the amount of $2,743,312.65.
The vouchers are agreed by the county judge?
Second, for the discussion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Vaughn, second by Kelly.
I do have a question for the court. Sheriff, this may be a question for you, page number 11 of 30, check number 161858, and there's two line items in the amount of $1,000. So, it appears this may be the first expense, at least the first that I've seen on the psychiatric services, that we recently approved that contract last Commissioners Court. I'd be interested to know any feedback that you'd like to share with the court. I know there was a lot of public comment around us offering those services. Thank you for coming to the front.
It has been truly a blessing to us, and it's working out very well. I don't know what else to tell you other than that, and right now it's helped tremendously out there with both of them, she's able to fix people who have some mental health issues that they have.
And it's helped with the diagnosis time?
Yes.
Diagnosing quicker? Okay, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one more question, page 19 of 30, check number 161958. Three line items, but in the amount of $589,429.31. It appears that we've made the payment for the tech share applications, is that right, Carrie? The partial payments? Okay? Thank you.
Okay, anything else? I have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Did you raise your hand? Okay. So, four one, correct. Okay, Kay Holland, you're up. Number three, insurance report, to recognize the insurance report. Good morning.
Good morning. There is nothing remarkable on our insurance vote report this morning.
Okay. Nothing remarkable.
Nothing remarkable. It's to recognize the report.
So recognized. Okay, and then the next one is also you, the ARCS program, to review the Affordable Care Act reporting and tracking service program agreement, fee schedule, contact designation form, and inter-local agreement required for participation in the ARCS program offered by Texas Association of Counties for ACA/IRS reporting and compliance as discussed on 3/2315, and take any action necessary.
Yes, as you'll recall, back on March 23rd, this court heard a report from Kim Wilder with Texas Association of Counties in regards to the Affordable Care Act reporting and tracking service, ARCS, that Texas Association of Counties is beginning to provide. At that time, the court elected and approved participation in that program. We now have the inter-local agreement and the participation agreements for the ARCS program, and I have those available for signature. I have the originals with me this morning. I provided the agreements, the ARCS program agreement, in the packets, and I believe the inter-local agreements were distributed to Commissioners and Judge on Friday.
Okay, do we have any questions on these?
Hey, I do see it on the second page, but just confirmation, they are waiving all of the fees for participation in this?
For this year, yes.
For this year?
Yes. And as you'll recall, there is an optional forms distribution fee, but as we discussed in March, we plan to distribute our own forms.
Will the fees be as stated here next year then?
We don't know. They are subject to change next year.
And in terms of the inter-local agreement, does it speak to the fees being waived this current fiscal year?
The inter-local agreement just addresses the fee schedule.
That will be attached as an addendum?
Yes, as an attachment to that agreement. The only thing different in the inter-local agreement from the current inter-local agreement is it has added the ARCS program, essentially.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the ARCS program agreement fee schedule to be included as an addendum and contract designation form as presented to the court.
Judge, who did that? Okay. Second by Monsieur Vaughn. You have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand.
And I will need those originals signed as quickly as possible so I can get them back to Texas Association of Counties.
Thank you. Number five, schedules report, to recognize a monthly cash report and to recognize a second quarter investment report. I was trying to find you, I'm sorry. Do you need to come up, or we just need to recognize? Okay. I have such a great group of kids. They're so good. Okay, I forgot my glasses this morning, using my famous dollar stool. In the investment report, there's just a couple of things I do want to bring to your attention. On page eight. You'll notice capital projects is 7.4 million, and a couple of weeks ago, probably just a little over a week, we did move 6 million from general into capital projects because of our budget issues. And so we did move that money over that we had not yet since we had decided on budget. So that's not reflective in this court?
Could you say that again? I'm sorry, I missed it. Capital projects?
From general into capital projects. I'm sorry, I think I said six, it's 3 million that we moved over.
So they should be 10 rather than seven?
Right. Remember, this is just a snapshot picture of the end of March, so. But, just to let you know that that budget issue has been now accomplished. The totals this morning in our Amarillo National Bank check account is 7.2 million, which is earning the 25 basis points. Cedars, we have a $3 million Cedars that matures April 30th, and we will probably roll that over. Then we have the $7 million Cedars, which is reflective of the letter that I just passed It matured April 2nd, and we were going to roll it over for another three-month period, and had instructed the bank to do that, but when we got the paperwork and all this stuff came in, they had rolled it over to a year's Cedars. So, we got together, the investment committee called them together, and then representatives from the bank, and this letter states that no matter what, I'm going to go ahead and leave it as a year's Cedars, but in the event during budget cycle or even during tax season that we need that 7 million, then the bank will release it, and they will take responsibility for any penalties for that being released early. So basically, we will be earning 40 basis points for that investment, but with very little risk, or actually no risk. Remind me one more time what Cedars stands for? I keep thinking of trees. Certificate of Deposit Accounts Registry. There you go. Good one. I'm so proud. Okay, so, in tax pools, we have invested 3.3 million, and in tax pool prime, we have 12 million. So this morning's TAP total cash, and this is just our general fund, is 32,626,845.90. Sounds good. Any questions, anybody?
Leanne, I do have a question, as it relates to the tax pool, tax pool prime, and the AMB, the general accounts, the quarterly. The snapshot of 2014 showed 33 million, currently 7 million. What is so different a year? Has the investment strategy just been more aggressive?
Are you looking at the quarterly?
Yeah.
Okay, what page is that?
Page eight. I'm looking at the general accounts.
In comparison to 2014?
Correct, yes.
Right. You know, I don't know if it's all investments, it's revenue brought in, expenditures, I mean, there's so many different variables that could give us the difference in the balance. Carrie, have any? Okay. The money is. And we really have tried to be more aggressive with the investments, although it's, as you know, it's very volatile, yeah. And it's hard to get new rates, but we really have tried to consistently keep investments as high as we can. Thank you, Leanne. Any other questions? So recognized on both of those. Number six, the Rock Island Rail Trail Transportation Alternatives Program grant support. To consider and act upon the resolution, a resolution in support of the TAP projects. Kelly Shaw is here from the city to explain.
So, S. Kelly is. Just to remind you, you have a handout on your tables with the hashtag PotterCountyTX for Twitter questions. At the end, we'll have an agenda item that we're addressing the full court to ask those questions. So, I think I had a student earlier say you were encouraging some social media here. There you go.
Good morning, Kelly.
Good morning.
Do you want me to read this resolution, or is it okay if everyone just reads it themselves? Or what do you want me to do?
Whatever you would like to do. I can tell you a little bit about it first, so maybe you have more background before you read it.
Okay. Would you scoot up to that, because I don't think anybody can hear you.
How's that?
That's good.
I appreciate you having me here this morning and getting me on the agenda with sort of the short notice, but what I'd like to do is, first of all, tell you a little about some improvements that we're wanting to do with the Rock Island Rail Trail. But I guess more importantly, that what we're asking for is, through this process of coming up with these improvements, a funding source has become available that we'd like to take advantage of. And so, I guess at the end of this, what we would really like to do is ask for your support through, by way of a resolution, to support the application that we're making for this funding. It's a grant, the Texas Department of Transportation's Transportation Alternatives Program grant, and so, we would like to try, we're going to submit an application for that, and we'd like to get your support about it, for it. The Rock Island Rail Trail, I hope you're familiar with it, if not have used it, at least familiar with it. It's a trail that runs from Colter, basically northeast, all the way to Crockett, it's about four miles long. It was constructed in 2002, and cost about $2.7 billion to do the whole thing at the beginning, which was also partially funded by a state of Texas grant. Our comprehensive plan in 2010, one of the main themes that came up in that process was, a lot of people commented that they would like to see more pedestrian bicycle facilities like the rail trail in Amarillo. And there were some comments recently about, we've been learning on some other things with the City of Amarillo's comprehensive plan, and some of those comments were saying, well, what are you doing about the pedestrian bicycle facilities that was also included in the comprehensive plan? So, basically, about September, we put together a action subcommittee made up of two members from the Planning and Zone Commission, two members of the Traffic Advisory Board, and two members of the Parks and Recreation Board, and we started looking at the rails-to-trail project, and we thought that that was the best facility that we currently have in Amarillo to, what can we do to improve it? What can we do to increase the users of that trail? So, we started a process where the result of the process was the Rock Island Rail Trail master plan. So it's a specific master plan for that trail that's part of our overall bike trail system in Amarillo. And I dropped some copies off, so I hope you have those in front of you. But it was a specific master plan that the subcommittee and some user groups, some bicycle groups, and we had a couple of meetings out on the trail, and actually walked the entire trail, identified some issues that, you know, we can make some improvements here and there. We took all of that together, we also had a couple of meetings at Margaret Wills Elementary School, got some input there from citizens, we wrapped all that up, came up with some solutions or some alternatives that we have in the plan. And basically, they had to do with accessibility, improving the accessibility of the trail, connectivity, improving the connectivity to the trail. We really think that there's an opportunity to connect that trail to either, to both the downtown area and to the Metapark area and the medical center, the big employment center. And so, there was also a lot of comments about just the safety, about getting across some of the arterials like Bell and West Area, and that's a big issue right now with the current signs that we have. So, there's a lot of recommendations in this plan that address those issues. And then, oh, by the way, while we were about ready to wrap this up, the Texas Department of Transportation made a call for an application for the Texas Alternatives, or the Transportation Alternatives Program Grant, TAP, which specifically says that they will fund improvements to off-road bike and trail systems, so it matched perfectly what we were doing. The improvements that we've identified that we would like to try to do, first phase, total about $800,000. The TAP grant, if approved, would help pay for about 80% of that, they would fund 80%. The city would be required to have at least a 20% match. We would like to try to go a little bit over that to about a 30% match to maybe help our chances a little bit. But basically, what we've done is we filled out an application, those applications are due May 4th, and we have an application put together, we're presenting that to the City Council tomorrow, because if they do have to agree that if we get approved, we have to come up with about $245,000 to make our part of the match. So we're putting that together, and there's a lot of those neighborhoods on the north side of the trail that sort of have some areas to get on with the trail, we'd like to improve those. Like I said, we'd like to improve the intersection safety, improve the connectivity to downtown and Metapark area, that's just sort of the beginning. So we'd like to make the application, we will have it ready by May 4th, we think it really will be improvements. Whether we get approved for the grant or not, we still are moving forward with making those improvements. And we just want to increase the ushership of the trail, maybe more than just a recreation facility, but more of a true multimodal type transportation facility where it's not just recreation, that it's people commuting, exercise, and all kinds of things. So, just want to ask for your support for that application, and hopefully with your support, other groups as well, we can get it approved. Be happy to answer any questions.
Kelly, it's my understanding that the overpass, the old Rock Island overpass there at Sixth and Bowie, or Crockett, wherever, you're going to enhance that to make that part of the trail, is that correct?
That's part of the plan. It's probably a longer-term goal. It's, what we need to do first is have it engineered and designed, so that's a little bit more than the scope that we're looking at right now, but it definitely is part of the plan in that when we improve that, you could get your way from the trail actually down to Sixth Street, where there's some work being done currently with Downtown Amarillo Inc. to, with a tiger grant that they're applying for. That would actually dovetail into that project that would bring it from that bridge into downtown and on out to the Santa Fe.
Depot.
Depot.
That's correct. Okay, good. Any questions on that, anybody?
I move that we approve the resolution supporting the City of Amarillo's application to TechSOT for this Rock Island Rail Trail.
Second, for discussion, I have just a quick question, Kelly. I need a comment to Melissa Daly as it relates to connectivity and safety for East Amarillo, especially connectivity for the potential downtown projects. So we discussed Arthur and the Arthur Bridge, 10th Street, and Houston, because there is a bus stop there, possibly being an alternative transportation mechanism. I am clear that it cannot be part of Phase One, because part of that is already in draft form and ready to be submitted, but I just wanted to make you aware of that as well. TechSOT is also doing some work on the Arthur Bridge right there, so I think timing, really to kind of piggyback off of some of the statements you made, timing is really working to our advantage to add that piece of it, to include that in the trail. So I wanted to certainly make the work more evident on that.
I appreciate that, and connectivity to all parts of the city is important, it's a bit quality of life piece, so I'm glad to hear you say that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. Ask us five zero. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
I'll get this signed for you today. Kelly, I'll get this signed for you today. Okay, number seven, Amarillo Tourism Week to consider and act upon the proclamation of Potter County Tourism Week. We have, uh, Eric Miller and Garrett Malberg from the Chamber coming up. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for evidence.
Sure.
Were you going to read that?
Do you want me to read it to, to everybody?
Just me, please.
Okay. It's Potter County Tourism Week proclamation. Whereas the travel and tourism industry is one of the county's largest employers, helping more than 8,000 residents enjoy productive lives. And whereas in 2013, Amarillo hosted more than 4.5 million persons stays from all over the world with an estimated direct expenditure of over $876 million. And whereas without our state's vibrant tourism industry, each taxpaying family in Potter County would owe an additional $770 in annual local and state taxes. And whereas several world-renowned area attractions are enjoying milestones this year, including the 90th anniversary of the Amarillo Symphony, 75th anniversary of the American Quarter Horse Association, the 50th anniversary of the Outdoor Musical Drama of Texas, and the 20th anniversary of the World Championship Ranch Rodeo. And whereas the entire tourism industry should be celebrated, not just recognized. Now therefore, we, Potter County Judge and Commissioners, in support of National Tourism Week, do hereby proclaim May 1st through May 9th, 2015, as Potter County Tourism Week.
Thank you very much, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for having us on this beautiful rainy day in Amarillo. Obviously tourism is a big, big business, not only in Amarillo, but our state and the United States. We're very proud of what we've accomplished in tourism. And when you talk about the money spent by tourists, that's kind of a domino effect. It follows when they come to our city, they spend money and that equates as tax dollars and sales tax dollars that we all benefit from and keeps the property taxes low and all our taxes low. We really appreciate you having us here today. We're very proud of what we do in tourism. A lot of people don't realize how much activity, how many jobs it creates. And in closing, I know Eric wants to say a few words, but it's proper that we have these high school students today. We just got notification from the Chamber that Ms. Sienna Miller from Paladura High School was just recognized on national news as the National Teacher of the Year.
Oh, wow.
So congratulations, Paladura High School.
I really can't top that. I will not try. We're all very proud of Sienna Peoples. Uh, one last thing, I want to invite everybody on the dais. I'd like to invite everybody in this auditorium to come join us throughout the week, May 1st through May 9th. We have about five or six great public events for you to join us and learn a little bit more about tourism in Amarillo and in Potter County. Especially, a week from Wednesday, we will be at Bill's Backyard Classics, probably Amarillo's newest attraction. It is a collection of classic cars, second to none in the United States. And I really feel that strongly. We'll be there from 5:00 to 7:00. We'd love to see everybody here and everybody here join us for that evening. And that's all I have, but thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Eric.
I do have just one quick question as it relates to the resolution. I'm interested to know the figure, uh, as it reads Potter County taxpayers would owe an additional $770 in annual local and state taxes. I'm interested to know how you came to that figure.
We work with our friends in the, in Austin, in the state of Texas. And if the vibrant tourism economy throughout the state was not there to generate the extra hotel occupancy tax and sales tax, all of us would have to pay a little bit extra to cover that difference, to cover that gap. So that's what it refers to, Commissioner Maggia.
Is that from the Controller's Office that that figure shares?
I, I think it's coming through Controller's Office, through, uh, Texas Travel Industry Association, which is our statewide industry association.
Thank you.
Oh, one quick thing, we are very pleased to have Daphne Atkins and Teresa, and Teresa, I forget your last name, and I'm sorry, uh, who are wonderful members of the tourism community. They are out at the Texas Travel Industry, Texas Travel Information Center, I-40 East at Airport Boulevard. Feel free to go by and see them this week.
Why don't you have them stand up so everybody can see them?
Yeah, stand up.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
I'd like to, am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
Before they walk away, I'd like to just express how proud I am of what our Amarillo Chamber of Commerce does and our Convention and Visitors Bureau. They're second to none in the state. I've, I've traveled around the state quite a bit and seen a lot of people in action. And, and these, uh, these people that we have here are great and, uh, thank you for everything you do for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I move that, that we accept the Potter County Tourism Week proclamation that was previously read.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Church, second by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, raise your right hand. Kelly's five, zero. Okay, one more resolution. Number eight, resolution, support of anti-copper theft legislation. To consider and act upon passing a resolution in support of Senate Bill 437 and Senate Bill 513, currently pending in the Texas Legislature, intended to discourage copper theft.
Judge, we have Cameron Monroe. Uh, and Cameron, if you'll just address the court with your title, but he will introduce us to this resolution and, uh, will give us the background.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Maggia. Thank you. I'm Cameron Monroe. I'm Regional Director for AT&amp;T. Uh, lived in Amarillo all my life. Did not realize when I was put on the agenda today that, uh, my wife would be here, so I've got to behave. But, uh, I appreciate the students being here to see not only how this commission affects issues that are of local interest, but yet, uh, issues that affect our, affect our entire state. Uh, a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Maggia and I, uh, started a conversation regarding copper theft. There is now a, uh, a House substitute bill to go with these two Senate bills, and that bill is CSHB 2187 by Representative Wayne Smith. The reason we have interest in this as a corporation is that, uh, copper theft, uh, totals about $1 million worth of, uh, loss to AT&amp;T. But not only us, if you have noticed the newspaper articles, uh, that seem to be every day. Not every day, but there's, there's plenty if you want to find them. XL Energy has lost, uh, considerable money. Uh, if you ride by the old helium plant, I think it's unusual. There's a sign right across from Gander Mountain that says, "All the copper has already been stripped from this building. Don't bother." Uh, Tech Stop has lost a considerable amount of money. And, uh, even the current thing seems to be that farmers with their pivot irrigation systems are being stripped of the copper from those machines. That copper, uh, totals about $1,200, what thieves get. And it costs the farmers about $15,000 to replace the cost of what those gentlemen or those people have taken. So we are, uh, trying to help support this bill. Uh, the Texas, uh, Association of Counties is in support of this legislation. Also, the Texas Sheriff's Association is in support of this legislation. I would like to thank Sheriff Brian E., uh, Brian Thomas and Sheriff Joe Richardson have both made calls and, uh, informed our elected officials. They support this legislation. So we're asking Potter County to help us convey the message to Austin that this, uh, legislation is necessary. And primarily, what the bill does, it changes, uh, the way recyclers can pay for their material that they're getting from these people bringing it to them. They will no longer be able to pay cash, uh, for these metals being delivered to them. There will be one exception, and that's where the substitute bill, uh, changes. If you have, uh, regular sales of metal to these dealers, you can obtain a cash card, which allows you to get cash from the recyclers. If you do not have that card, however, there will be no more cash paid, uh, on the spot for these metals. This bill has been patterned after a, a bill that was passed in Michigan a few years ago. Michigan saw their copper thefts, uh, uh, decline from over 300 to about a dozen after the bill was passed. Lastly, I would tell you that Texas is second in the country, only to California, in copper theft. So it is a, a major problem for a state. We all pay. Uh, certainly if, if Tech Stop, AT&amp;T, XL loses money for copper, uh, those costs are going to be passed on. So we need to stop this. So thank you for letting me be here today, and I will certainly try and answer any question that I can.
Okay. Do we have any questions, anybody?
Cameron, if, if I can ask, if you share a statistic that you had shared with me regarding, uh, the local area as it relates to copper theft being a prominent presence here? And I think you spoke to that loosely, that there was a statistic that you had shared that really was eye-opening to me as it relates to the theft. And then kind of walk through what are the challenges today by receiving the cash payment?
Now, the challenge is by receiving a pa- now, explain, Commissioner.
So today, they're able to get a cash payment if they are, if they're selling the copper?
Right.
And so what are those challenges that they're getting as a result of just being able to get the cash payment? What, what kind of challenges that bringing to the theft? I'm assuming it's encouraging the theft because it's so easy to get payment.
We find it does encourage the payment. Uh, there is a high degree of, of, uh, uh, drug usage that goes with this money that's been found. So there is, there's kind of an undercurrent of people getting, um, these metals paid for by cash. There seems to be a high influx of sales, from my understanding, Thursdays and Fridays to get that cash. And, uh, so the, by not being able to do that, uh, and the penalties and identification in this bill are also, uh, much stronger than they have been, where there's considerable background checks that will go into, uh, constant sellers of, of metals. I would relate one story to you in, in Abilene where a recycler, uh, started noticing the same individual had been in front of them for a while, several times selling, uh, batches of copper. They finally realized that this individual sold them the same batch of copper six times. And they thought he looked a little bit familiar on the sixth time, and they checked their video. This individual was, was, uh, selling them the copper in the morning, raking in and stealing the same batch of copper, uh, an evening or two later. And on the sixth time, they finally wised up and were able to, uh, get the man arrested. So, uh, some of these individuals doing this, uh, my personal opinion, if they would spend more time being honest and forthright citizens, they'd probably do real well, because they do well being criminals.
Yeah.
So.
Unfortunately, yeah.
And, and Commissioner, answering your question, the exact dollar figures are in conversation. I don't have those with me, and I apologize for that. Uh, but, uh, I would go back to our, uh, our figure of a million dollars, I can tell you. Um, you will recall Amarillo Sand and Gravel, a few months ago in, in 2014, had $35,000 worth of copper stolen from them. And the article in the paper said that their estimated replacement cost was a million dollars. So, uh, the dollars being taken certainly don't reflect in, in the amount, uh, that's being to replace those dollars.
I believe that Potter County has been victim of this too. I think some of our buildings have been vandalized and, and copper taken from them. So am I correct? Mike, is that correct? Yes.
Mr. Monroe, could you, uh, address the additional punishment that, uh, they're seeking references to?
Actually, last session, Commissioner, the, uh, copper theft was raised to a felony. And that felony still stays intact, but that in itself has not deterred, uh, the thefts. What this does is focus more on the, the financing going to these individuals who are stealing the metal and prohibits that cash payment. Because the, the penalties, uh, as one of the law enforcement officers told me, they consider that a cost of doing business if they get caught.
Well, the thing, I, I guess my question is, are they basing the punishment on what was stolen? What the damage was in the process of this theft? You mentioned that, you know, the copper that was stolen cost a million dollars for replacement. Why is that not addressed as the punishment rather than just the amount of the theft?
Very good question, and, and I don't have an exact answer for that. I will tell you that the million dollars, uh, in the article, not only totaled the amount to replace the copper, but the wages lost and all the things entailed of how this company was impacted, the, the loss of business because it was stripped from their machinery that they used to business. And so all of those things were entailed to make that million dollars.
I mean, that's the figure that should be based on the punishment, not just what was taken.
I would agree with you, sir. Yes. Thank you.
And just in terms of where it's at the court, I did want to let you know I confirmed with Jim Allison that is included in the resolution. Uh, they indicated the Texas Association, the Texas Association of Counties, the county commissioners and judges will support you as well.
This is true.
Prior to putting it on the agenda.
This is true. Uh, you may be familiar with Judge Don Allred in Odom County. Uh, he has been in Austin, uh, hiding a lot, more than he's been, I think, back in Odom County. And he is very outspoken on this. And, uh, I've had the privilege of probably talking to a total of 30 county judges and sheriffs that have all called in or written emails in support of copper, this copper legislation. So it seems the only ones opposed to it, this, this, I'm sure you may have the question, there are a few smaller recyclers who are opposed to this bill. Uh, but even the larger recyclers have signed on and realize it is a problem. And, uh, they're supporting the legislation too. So, uh, as, as our legislation, our legislative system allows, uh, all individuals to have a voice. Uh, some, in my opinion, and relatively speaking, some smaller voices are being very loud on this issue. And that's the reason I came to my county here, Potter, to say we, we need to do something to show that it does need to be stopped. And I think, again, uh, the fact that, uh, Sheriff Thomas, uh, was one of those who's made some contacts on behalf of this bill shows that it is, uh, a problem here in our county.
One, one of the questions that I still have brought up, I mean, it's an excellent question. What about the, the independent individuals out there that does frequently dealing with copper? So, you know, they're not large enough to have a, for, for vendor license or petition for that, 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 uh, license to, to sell on a particular level of it. But there are individuals that, that's how they make their living. They, they do that as a retiree or some to that degree that frequently gather copper and use it in, uh, for a valid way.
Uh, those individuals will have several options. They will be able to obtain, uh, through some paperwork, their, a cash card where if it is on a regular basis, uh, they can obtain that cash card and they will be continuing to get cash. If they don't want to go that direction, however, the bill allows them to be paid by check, money order, or a direct deposit of funds on, on the recycler's part to their account. So they do have those avenues also. So really, uh, a cash or debit card, a check, money order, direct deposit. They have four avenues they can still be paid for.
I make a motion that we approve passing a resolution in support of Senate Bill 437 and Senate Bill 513.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Ask us five, zero. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Maggia.
We'll get this signed and get it to you sometime today, okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay, number nine, local government corporations to provide an update on the local government corporation.
So, uh, as you know, every time the local government corporation meets, I put an agenda on here just to keep us all informed. We're scheduled to meet this Thursday as well. Um, we at Potter County are a non-voting member. I will be at the Wichita Conference, uh, Commissioners Conference and that schedule, that meeting was scheduled, knowing our inavailability, so I just want to share that to the court, uh, that that was scheduled, knowing we couldn't be represented. So I've asked to participate via a conference line so that I can bring an update back to the court as I feel as I should as the representative. A couple of items that I just want to keep you in the loop on. Uh, the update was given from Mr. Patel on the Private City Hotel, roughly a $42 million project. Uh, the lender has been approved, the debt is in place, equity is in place, and they're loosely indicating mid-September as a groundbreaking, turning the dirt. I just wanted to share that timeline. They were very hesitant and really said it is tentative, but again, I just wanted to keep everybody informed. Coca-Cola, uh, they are slated to potentially already be moving, may be doing so a little ahead of schedule. Uh, they're doing a pre-turnover walkthrough, and they contractually have until June 1st to start that. So I wanted to keep the court informed on that. But, uh, the last update that we received is demolition may be ahead of schedule. I mean, that piece of property is needed for the other projects. So the Coca-Cola move is being watched closely. If you not had an opportunity to get out there to Centerport, um, and did they get a deal? Next item. Tears and parking. So the parking garage, uh, there are several parking committees that are happening outside of the LGC. Um, I've advocated for Potter County representation and our judge filling that seat just to make sure that we are represented. It goes without saying, we have a lot of property around the downtown projects and how that relates, and just make sure that we have a voice in that process. So there is a sub- So, there is a sub, sub-parking committee, uh, but we are asking for representation on that. The TexDOT streetscape project, so they presented to the LGC of what they indicated, they were roughly at ninety percent design. One thing I'll remind the court is there is some of the Potter County property that is included in that TexDOT streetscape, especially as it relates to our district courts building and our sheriff's admin. So, as we start to look at our strategic alignment and development, um, I have indicated until we have our plans in place, we may not want to make those changes just yet, uh, but they are indicating ninety percent design. I've asked for those to be sent to the judge to review, uh, especially if they're at ninety percent at this point. Um, there is a restaurant on Tenth and Buchanan that they indicated was a one million dollar project, potentially coming in, and then the Excel Downtown Headquarters Private Investment, roughly forty-four million dollar project. There is a retail, uh, initiative that's happening in RFP, but I may be calling it the wrong thing, David, so you may have to help me here. But what they've done is they've, they've come out to, they've come out and presented, uh, an RFP, uh, for anybody that would like to take on the retail initiative. As you know, for the parking garage, the bottom floor, as we presented in our previous court, uh, the renderings will be all retail space. And so, they're looking for an individual that will lease out each of those retail spaces, and they're looking for one individual to really kind of take the onus on that. Uh, but that has gone out in the form of a public meeting. They've presented the information and they're asking for others to come back to the table. What I expect to happen at the next LGC meeting this Thursday, which again is why I felt like we needed to be there, there may be updates on all of these items, but in particular, starting to look at the MPEV, which has been ta- tagged as the ball field, and what that will look like, what can that look like, um, and the next steps on that. So, I want to make sure that I'm able to come back and provide an update to the court. That's everything I have, Judge.
Thank you. Let's just recognize. Okay, I have been told that no one can hear us, so please, if you're going to speak, put your mouth on the microphone. Okay, number ten, property repair. To consider and act upon approving repairs to the baseball stadium, field lighting in the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars, Duke Electric. Funding to be determined. Are you speaking to that, Nick?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Excuse me, a couple, a couple, I guess it was probably about a month ago.
Can't hear you.
We, uh, we went out to the ballpark just to check the lighting, as far as field lighting goes, because it's my understanding that we're not responsible for the stadium lighting, seating areas and such. Um, we found fifteen light bulbs that are currently not working properly. My main concern is the left field, because the outfield light pole, every other light was out. So, it was pretty apparent that we had some major things going on there. On review, we found, uh, some other, some other, the transmission lines that feed the, the field lights also needed some, some repair. So, that's included in the cost that you guys have. All this would bring us up to date, and it would finally complete what we would need to have rewired. We would not have to rewire any additional poles from this day on, from my understanding, that's my hope today, so. Once we, if, if this is approved, if we do have the funds available, if it's approved, you need this completed. You shouldn't have to worry about ballpark costs for a long time, unless it's just a light bulb here and there, you know, and that's expected.
So, do we have the money? Is this our responsibility?
The, the contract does state that, that we, the lessor, will be responsible for all the outfield lighting, so it is our responsibility.
Okay.
And Cameron, I was just going to ask, as it relates to the budget item, we do have, um, a small budget out there, is that right? What is that dollar?
We have an eleven thousand dollar budget to cover.
Eleven thousand currently?
I don't think your mic is on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eleven thousand currently budgeted, and is there any suggestion of where the offset may come from other than contingency? How much is left in our contingency fund?
Three hundred eighty-one thousand.
Three hundred eighty-one thousand? One thing I will inform the court, I did take a tour of the stadium with Mrs. Tucker last week. Um, she walked me through some of the repairs in the manager's office and, um, some of the items on the field and the players' room, indicated roughly forty thousand dollars worth of improvements currently. About ten thousand dollars, she indicated she was able to offset with the trade of advertising or that kind of thing. But she also indicated this is direct expense, um, from, from her to get this team up to par. But I did look at the new painting and the new, um, carpet that's scheduled to come, and looked at the field. And Nick, certainly she spoke, um, really good things about you and the department, tried to get them prepared for a season, so I did want to say thank you for that.
Commissioner, when you indicate, uh, specifically, when you indicate, uh, expenditures from her, is that personal?
Yeah, she and I did ask that question, Commissioner, whether that was coming from the owner, and that's who we're contractually working with, Mr. Allison. Um, she indicated they were her expenses. And, uh, the vision is that the ball field would be, I'm sorry, the ball team would be self-sustaining. So, should the team make money, then she in essence would be able to pay herself back, but if not, I'm assuming that's a risk she's incurring.
Does she request an asset upgrade to the stadium, any of this work she's doing?
I'm assuming once she's done, um, she would, she would provide that information to fulfill the contract. I, I'm assuming so, yes.
She's aware that she has, I would highly prefer that, you know, he was informed about that, so it's with anybody, so she, she has to be there.
So, do we have any interaction with the owners, uh, as far as their culpability, as, as far as the, Commissioner?
I have not, and have not in my three and a half years as a Commissioner. I did express that concern to the city as it relates to the new potential ball team and what that might look like, is I have not had any interaction with Mr. Allison, and I'm not sure if any member of the court has.
No, but wouldn't you expect that to be the general manager you're talking with?
That's al- that's always been the case. Whoever took over the, as long as I can remember that ball team, that, that owner, if it's in out of town, that is been the case. We've always interacted with local people, almost never heard from them in out of town.
Well, I will tell you, as it relates to the new ball field, they have heard from the owner.
I have met with Stephanie also, and she is spending a lot of her own money on this, on the upgrade for that stadium. So, she has a passion for it and she wants to see it do better, so, um, she also talked about some fundraising that she's got in mind, and so, we've talked about that, so I don't know where we're going to go with that, but. So, we do have the money, we can fix the lights then, okay. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the repairs to the ballpark stadium, field lighting, the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars to Duke Electric.
Okay, I have a second.
Does it need to include the budget line item?
Yes, can we add to that motion, Commissioner, to move twenty-two thousand from contingency?
Yes, I would like to include that, twenty-two thousand from contingency.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second motion, first motion was by Commissioner Church, second by, uh, Commissioner Morguia. All in favor, raise your right hand. Five, zero.
Thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Nick, Stephanie also indicated she would send emails of when they were having events there, that she would, she'd been sending those to you. That might be good to involve the court, so we make it out there and make a presence and certainly roll up our sleeves and help.
As soon as I receive it, I'll, I'll go on to it.
So, I have one question, Nick, is the, is these improvements, is it going to change things to where we will have to do upgrades and every other, uh, what I'm talking about is grandfather flaws of, uh, what's going on at the stadium? I'm just a little concerned about what kind of upgrade she's going to make.
At this time, I'm not aware of all the current upgrades that she's looking at or, you know, trying to take on currently. As soon as I find out that information, we will, we will definitely be sure we follow all that is going on.
Commissioner, everything that I've seen so far is just cosmetic, painting, carpet. I've not seen any structural changes, but that's certainly a very good point, um, so I'll make it a note as I follow up next time to ask that question. Very good point.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks. Okay, number eleven, property insurance repair. To consider and act upon approving the following proposals from Basic IDIQ to repair the hail damage from the May twenty-thirteen storm, utilizing TIPS Contract Number One Zero Zero One Two Four One Three. I'm Mike.
Well, it, it, it's taken two years, but we're finally at a point to repair the property. This would get us to the point where all our property was repaired, minus fairground buildings that we're still having discussions on. So, this is to complete the work. Um, the spreadsheet I gave you shows the, the insurance money that we're receiving on each building for this, um, and then their quote is to the right. Uh, this is a company the TAC recommended that we use, and after they went out and looked at it, they actually raised the values of what it would have been a cost to repair the building. So, um, I've also talked to a few counties and cities, uh, that have used this contractor, and, and all of them have been happy with their work and the quality work of communications. So, it's my recommendation through using this cooperative contract that we, uh, we utilize them to finish repairing the rest of the hill.
Okay.
Yeah, Judge Tanner, you had a question regarding two of the buildings out there, the, uh, fuel canopy out there, Bowie Property and the, uh, TexDOT two-story building. Very legitimate question. Just to make each one of you aware, the Commissioner's Court mothballed those two buildings. They're totally shut down, so it's up to you, if you want to pursue to put the money into it to replace these roofs.
That was, that was my concern, that we're going to pay for something that we don't use. Um, I'm not sure how, how we should approach that, but what do you?
The two-story.
The two-story, the TexDOT two-story building and then the, the fire, the, um, fuel pump canopy.
The two-story administration building is one on the southwest corner. Uh, we do store certain items in there if, uh, as needed. Uh, the gas canopy is just a structure there to protect the gas pumps.
Is that two-story building historical? Has it been designated?
No, sir.
Do you have recommendations, Mike?
Yes.
The, uh, it just depends on what you want to do with the buildings. If you want us to continue to use the two-story admin for a storage of some type, we need to keep a roof structure on it. If you do not, then it's a wooden roof structure, it will rot. Your gas canopy, uh, that type of roof that's on that building there, you know, it could last a little while longer, just depending on which direction the court goes with the overall projects within the next few months and making decisions.
Do you see a need for these two buildings to be maintained?
Uh, you have mothballed them, uh, you cannot bring them back up, you cannot do anything to them, and they should bring them fully up to code.
Well, it'd be foolish to do that, I think.
Very costly.
The, the, the storage that it's happening in, I guess, is that the Bowie or the TexDOT?
That is the, uh, they're both on the, uh, Bowie property, it's the two-story administration building.
Is that where the county attorneys, uh, you like, in the storage that's on them? Is that where the county?
Do you use that building for any storage?
To my knowledge, we're not using that building for storage. I think that last report, we're using the building six feet.
Six feet.
So, Judge, should we wait on these two, at least until we know direction from strategic planning? I mean, I don't know if this all has to go at one time, David, as it relates to the agreement.
The, the only problem is, is we're getting close to limits on repairing. Uh, they did give me an extension until August, um, and obviously with the fairgrounds, we're going to have to extend it past that. But, I mean, the insurance company will want us to make a decision fairly soon. Um, I mean, we're not, we aren't paying for it, I guess technically, but I mean, it's, it's being completely covered by the insurance amount that we're receiving from the insurance companies. So, um, this, if you decide not to repair it, you're not going to get this full amount, because this includes your repairable, because they've got an actual cash value versus a repairable amount. So, even if you decide not to do it, you wouldn't get this full twelve thousand back on the building. It would probably be half if not less that you can get that money back. Um, just something to think about.
I personally think it's a waste of money to, to fix a building that we're not using. That's just my feeling. Same thing with the fuel pump thing. I understand we need it now, but we're not going to need it in the, in the future, because we're going to go to the other, other way to do the fuel.
Are we paying insurance premiums on those buildings? Yes, we are. That we shouldn't pay insurance premiums?
I agree, I agree.
But, Judge.
So, can we? My question is, why, how does the insurance dictate how we use that money, whether we use it or not?
Well, I mean, they, what I'm saying is each building has a, has a actual cash value, and each building has a recoverable value if you do the repair, just like your home. If you get hail damage on it, they'll give you five thousand upfront, and once you complete the repair, they'll give you the rest of what it costs to replace it. So, they, they're not going to dictate how we use that, that upfront that we receive. We just wouldn't receive the backend money if we didn't do the repair.
Thank you.
So, we could deduct seventeen thousand from this total to not do those two? That's my wish, but that's just me.
Makes sense, right? Okay.
Okay. Okay, so I make a motion that we, was there any question on any of the other repairs? Everybody have, been okay with those?
No.
Okay. I make a motion that we, uh, repair everything but the fuel pump canopy in the TexDOT two-story building. Do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed?
My concern is these buildings are just going to look like other rundown buildings in the city, that if we don't take them down, we're just, we're going to be owners of junk property.
Well, it is my wish in the future that they will come down someday. Okay, four to one. Okay, uh, number twelve, Fire Station Number Six Project. To consider and act upon using available funds, and the Fire Station Number Six Project to purchase a flooring system for the fire engine bays from Armor Tough Flooring as a sole sales purchase.
Martin, you have an exhibit.
Yes, today. I'll pass it around.
Okay, please do.
Nice flooring.
Uh, don't tread on me.
When we started this project, we did not include any kind of, uh, floorwork for the truck bay in the original cost. As we started getting into the project and seeing the way the building was going to look, as we got through it, um, we decided that we needed to do something about the floor. We've looked at several products, uh, one was just to come in and polish the concrete. We looked at two different epoxy products, and we've looked at this, uh, product here, it's called Tough Armor. It's a PVC product. They come in and lay it, they lay it in one day. Uh, it has a twenty-five-year guarantee on it. We looked at the epoxy and the paint products, and we've all seen those in places before where they did not last. The gentleman with, uh, Paul Martini told us that with the, any of the epoxy products, when you drop something heavy on it, it's going to chip it, just like it does paint. And it has to be repaired very quickly, because the water gets under it, the epoxy will peel up just like paint does. This product is glued down, and it has, like I said, a twenty-five-year guarantee. The price that you've been given is for them to come in and install the products for us.
Where's the price?
It is. The price of the product is a total of twenty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's twenty-five thousand nine fifty-one for the product, and twenty-five hundred dollars for their cost for coming in.
Now, what's a square foot, is this a square?
Thirty-one hundred square feet. And the price, uh, David told me, it says here that it's eight thirty per square foot, and he said it figures out a little less than that.
Uh, a little less, they had to, even though they're covering thirty-one hundred square feet, they have to include thirty-three hundred square feet for when they're making their cuts and stuff like that. So, it, it's about seven eighty a square foot or something like that, is the actual what we're getting.
Time frame for it to be installed, do we know that?
They will, uh, he said tentatively they have it scheduled to come in on May the fourth. So, that's, let's see, it's next week, uh, come in next week. I hadn't realized it was quite that quick myself, and they said they'll take them one day. day.
So, these are the bays where the fire trucks will be?
Yes, ma'am.
And they will hold up to a fire truck?
Yes. I've talked to, the, their literature says that the, that the tiles will hold 2,700 pounds per square inch, which as I understand is actually more than the concrete will hold. And I've talked to several departments that have this, called them up and they returned my, the ones that returned my calls, and they're all very happy with the product.
So it will be, it will be glued down to the concrete that it's out there now?
Yes, ma'am.
So you got double, double support, okay?
The epoxy with the shape that the concrete's in now, we did two testers with different epoxy products by different companies. They look, they both look good, but when you go across that whole floor with all the problems, things have gone on with that floor, but before this, the epoxy is gonna just cover, it's just gonna highlight some of the problems with it. This product will completely cover it up, make it look very good when we start, and I feel like in a few years it'll look better than the alternatives.
Did you compare cost of this product with epoxy?
The epoxy was similar in cost. The polishing was a little cheaper.
Well, you have a much more durable and, and yes aesthetically, it's a, it's a lot better.
Yes, sir. And with all the, with the epoxy products and the polishing product also, they all required the trucks be out for approximately a week, that we couldn't put them in the station. And we could make arrangements with that, but that leaves that whole incident with the county much, with a much longer response time when we got calls out that way.
And how does this expense relate to your budget? I see that current complete project amount, 293, and a little contingency. What was the total budget on this project? Was it 350?
Your total, your total that the court approved was 300,000 budget-wise.
Yes.
Then 293,000, 205 is what you approved for the project, a difference of 67,94. Your contingency, that is a projected contingency right now, that's what money should have left over. If you take that to the difference, you've got 31,000 change left in there to do this work.
But as it relates to the budgeted amount of 300,000, with this purchase, we would be over budget. Is that right? No, I say that incorrect. Okay.
Because we do have a contingency set aside out of that 300,000, those contingencies first.
Okay, and what was the total amount of the contingency put aside?
If you'll look through the report I've given you right there, explain each line item contingency amount.
It's approximately over 24,000.
24,000, okay. Thank you. Is there any concerns on this flooring once it's wet? If it gets wet? Just the flooring. Is it slippery? Is it? I noticed some of the images with fire trucks on them. So, just my only question was the weight, if it could sustain the weight of our trucks? But then if there's, I'm assuming not if they're showing images, but I didn't wanna ask the question.
The fire stations that have it really do like it. We wet this one down and tried walking on it just a little bit, just to see how it was.
Well, because you can wet it down, it looks like it'd be real easy and clean, keep clean. You just wash it off.
Because with the fire trucks, we're going to have oil on it underneath the trucks, and we're gonna have water on it. Those are two things we're planning for. We changed colors. We originally, I thought the black would look pretty cool. We got that black, and immediately we were walking on it, and we're gonna change it to gray. The black shows footprints very, very well.
Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. I make a motion to consider and act upon using available funds from Fire Station Six to approve the Armor Tough Flooring.
Second?
A motion and second? All in favor, raise your hand. Five to zero. Thank you. Number 13, Potter County Projects, to hear a report on various Potter County projects and take any action necessary.
Do you have a report before you? Does anyone have any questions? If not, there's a few items I'd like to bring to your attention.
The only question I have is as it relates to the tri-state fairgrounds and the engineer and any updates on that.
We are still currently waiting on the engineer's report. It took about this long, our first engineer that we brought out there, had not been in contact with. He spoke to Virgil the other day, and they have not heard anything.
Okay.
But the engineer is on, is on site, but not speaking.
The Fire Station Six remodel that you were just addressing on the flooring, you're within your last few weeks of that project, your dedication is made on 15th, 10 a.m. at the Fire Station. I presume Pat or Richard will be giving out and Judge Tanner some additional information on that in the near future. Fire Station Three project, 75% CDs. I will determine this week whether or not they come before the court at the first meeting in the month of May. It takes a little longer to review those documents, so we may be pushing that presentation from Park Hill Smith and Kippel back to the last week of May. And I would like to address the Potter County Memorial Baseball Stadium. I know Commissioner McGee, you made a comment a while ago that you've been in contact with Ms. Tucker. I know that she has spoken to Nick on certain issues out there, and Ms. Tucker has not contacted me on anything even to be considered as a upgrade for that stadium. David, Mr. Kemp had said he had visited with her, so I've made Stephanie once again, try to plan that. Don't go do it hoping that the Commissioners are just going to grant it. Let's try to visit with these upgrades before you put all your money into them. To this day, that has not happened out of there for months.
So Mike, if I took the lead on maybe scheduling just a quick 30-minute walkthrough for the next couple of months, would that be beneficial? And I coordinate with, that time with you and her?
Yeah, she's, she's supposed to put this in writing. I'd be glad, I told her when I come out and walk through and look at it, but it's supposed to be put in writing, presented to my office. I will address it, I will determine yes or no after visiting with her, Commissioner. And then if she does not like my answer, then she has the option to come to Commissioners' Court.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion? We need to take any action on anything?
Mike, I was at the extension office teaching a class the other day, and I noticed that front faucet is leaking. Have they sent in a work order or anything to you on that?
I cannot tell you what check in.
Okay, but it's been leaking for a long time, it looks like.
On the building itself?
Yes.
We're looking, we're looking.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Number 14, employment items, to consider and act upon the following employment items: resignation of Roy Gomez, who's maintenance tech, effective April 15th; the transfer of Roy Burcom, summer mower, his replacement for Roy Gomez; salary increase for Damian Ancola; the hiring of Leslie Ann Kringle, summer mower; the hiring of James Clay, summer mower; the hiring of Nicholas Bogroski, summer mower; and the hiring of Aaron Padilla, summer mower. Sebastian?
Good morning.
Morning. And you were in the paper yesterday, congratulations.
Yes, I was. For good things.
For good things, yeah.
I don't know if that was a good thing.
Well, on Damian, the only thing is that I'm still working the bugs out. What I did is, the other two maintenance techs that I hired, I hired them at the budgeted rate, and for some reason, I, it was an oversight, and I should have started him out a little more. So, I'm asking for the rest of that money to bring him up level with the other maintenance techs.
So where is that increase coming from? Is that coming from another position?
No, it's in his budgeted position. It, I just, for some reason, I didn't, I didn't notice it until I looked at the salaries, that he was way below the other two maintenance techs. So, I'm trying to bring him up level, and all, all the maintenance techs will be the same.
Okay, so the, what you're including in this employment status change is what is budgeted for his positions, is that right?
Yes, yes.
And we're not talking about that big, big of an amount, right? Just 1,300?
I forget what it was. But it's, it's level with the other guys.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the employment items as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mercy McGee, second by H.R. Kelly. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Five to zero. Thank you very much. We have no executive session today. The Jol report is 468 with eight females.
None and children.
Is that correct? None and children, that's right? Not, none and children, that's right. Okay. Any insurance items, David?
No, nothing new to report.
Okay, anything? Anything for the agenda? Items next time.
If I can add, Judge, just probably the LGC update again, because we're scheduled to have a meeting this week, so I'll bring those updates back to the court.
We'll keep that on too.
I'll remember to take it out.
Okay. Okay, now, I believe we're gonna have, we have, if anybody did their tweet, it's time to.
Jason Patrick will lead us in the Twitter questions. This is our IT director.
One, two, yeah, lead us, yeah, lead us down a path. We, we've had about eight or 10 different questions come across. They, they really fall into two categories. The first is a lot of.
Jason, before we do that, let's get everybody to stand up, stretch a little bit. I know y'all been sitting down every quite a while, so. Go ahead, Spencer. You ought to do a call, let's stand next, go right ahead. How about we do Sweet Caroline?
Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Yes.
Hi, sir. Anybody who's a world has posted it. That's what I'm asking. Tweet?
Okay, yep, about ready to get started again?
Okay. Do we leave Jason? Or do Jason?
He's sitting down.
Jason, you're up. Okay, we're back, we're gonna do, see what the tweets are and are about.
Here's Jason. Yeah, really. Okay, we have basically two categories of questions come through. The first is dealing with kind of the logistics of the court. Where does the court meet normally? How often does it meet? What are the qualifications for being on the court? How do things get put on the agenda? So if y'all could talk to those.
I, I can do that. We normally meet in Commissioners' courtroom, that's in the county courthouse at Sixth and Fillmore. We, there are, we have one, a judge and four commissioners, and the commissioners are elected by their precinct. They have to live in the precinct they're elected, not like the city. The city is at large. We are, what's it called? The way we're elected?
What's it called, the way we're elected?
We're elected by voters in our precinct.
No, no, no. But I think, it's not, we're not at large. What's the word I'm looking for? Oh, whatever. You have to live in your precinct. In other words, you can't live anywhere in town, and you obviously have to live in Potter County. And the qualifications are, you just have to put your name in there and run.
18 years of age.
18, you have to be 18, but.
Not convicted of a felony.
That's obvious.
Yeah, not convicted of a felony, 18 years of age.
Yeah.
A citizen, US citizen.
Citizen, yeah. Well, I bet, I figured y'all knew all that, but, okay, we can go get real nitty-gritty and say you have to be 18, and not have a record, and be a citizen. What else?
Judge is elected at large.
Judge is elected at large. And Commissioner Tanner here is our first woman to ever be on the ballot, or, I'm sorry, Judge, Judge Tanner is our first judge, female judge to ever be on the ballot, and the first woman judge for Potter County.
Right.
And she, she took her seat January 1, and the structure that we follow in county government is the same for all 254 counties. So it doesn't matter how big or small the county is, they all have four county commissioners and one county judge. So you think of Dallas, you think of Houston, you think of all those big, big cities. Regardless, they all have this same structure.
And we are in charge of the entire budget for the county. This year, we have a $52 million budget that we're operating under, and we're about to start budget hearings in the next month or so to start for next year's budget. And to get something on the agenda, all you have to do is call my office, talk to my secretary, and she puts it on the agenda with the approval of one of the Commissioners or myself. Does that about cover it, Jason?
All right, that covers that group of questions.
Okay. Keep asking more questions, because we definitely have time before lunch, so hashtag Potter County TS.
Yeah, we got four hours of this, so you guys ready? I'm just kidding. They had some questions about the folks on the side, since they don't vote, who all's up there, and what are their roles, and, you know, all that sort of thing.
Okay, Stephanie, why don't you start? Go ahead and tell them what you do.
I'm with the county clerk's office. The county clerk, Julie Smith, is out of town, but our office is responsible for taking the minutes of Commissioners' Court and typing those minutes and presenting them to Commissioners' Court the next week. And so, that's why. And so that's what I do on, on the laptop, is take the minutes, the motions and seconds as they are, uh, as they give them in court.
And one thing, uh, add Stephanie, is our Commissioner's Court is also recorded. So it's available on the Potter County website online. So if there's a particular agenda item and you can't make it to court because it's at nine o'clock and you want to hear about it, it's online.
Okay. David?
My name's David and, and I am the purchasing agent for the county. Um, the, the state of Texas has statutes regarding how the county can spend its money on products and services. And, um, for a county that has a purchasing agent, there's not an expenditure that can be made that doesn't go through my office. So our office, um, we, we do a lot of shopping. It's some, some ladies feel like it'd be a dream job. But, uh, it, it, it's really getting contracts and pooling our resources to make one big purchase to get, get a better deal for the county. So this way, we don't have one department buying pencils and another one from another vendor buying pencils. We can buy 800,000 pencils and give it a better deal than they do singular as themselves. I'm appointed by a board of, uh, five district judges and the county judge. So the commissioners don't have any influence over my position. And, and that's done so that if they have buddies or contractors, they can't, uh, force the issue that they're gonna work for the county. So that's kind of how my office is set up. And, um, uh, there, there's no real qualifications. Like I said, it's an appointment, um, appointed position, so.
Yeah, remember that, that is appointed. Just remember.
Uh, I'm, I'm Dave Kemp. I'm with the Potter County Attorney's Office. I'm assistant county attorney and my boss is out there. Is that fair? Uh, the county attorney is elected, uh, but my, part of my job in the office is, uh, sit up here with the Commissioner's Court and provide legal advice when necessary. And then after, between meetings, I look at contracts and go to meetings and things like that.
So main job is to keep us out of jail.
That's right.
And our county attorney, Scott Brumley, who is elected. Scott, would you stand up? We'd certainly like to recognize you. Yeah, that's our county attorney.
My name's Carrie Good. I'm the county auditor.
I'll speak into the mic.
And I don't speak very loud. I'm sorry if y'all can't hear me. One of my main jobs here in Commissioner's Court is to make sure that there are ample funds in the budget to cover the items that they discuss. I do work very closely with the Commissioner's Court to set the budget once a year. Um, and I am also responsible for making sure that the expenditures are...
She is the money person. She knows where every dime goes and we're very thankful to have her.
How long have you been on the job, Carrie?
I've been county auditor for 10 years, but I've been with the auditor's office for 31 years.
Thirty-one years? Wow, yeah.
Could you tell us how you're selected?
Like the purchasing agent, I am also appointed, uh, by the district judges. The purchasing agent does also include the county judge, but mine is strictly the district judges. And I'm appointed for a two-year term.
What else you got, Jason?
Uh, we had some questions regarding the new baseball stadium going downtown. So you might want to speak to, you know, what Potter County's role...
That meeting is tomorrow with the city? They'll be talking about that.
Yeah, there's an election coming up about that, that's right. So you might want to talk about what our role is not.
What our role is not. Uh, we don't have a dog in that race, basically, um, or a horse, or...
Well, we do a little bit.
We kind of do because I've been told, I'm just really not gonna go into what I've been told. So I don't know. Did you want to speak on that, Commissioner?
I'd love to speak on it.
And I'll add some comments.
It's a, uh, it's called a multipurpose event venue. And, uh, a lot of people call it the ballpark, and it will be a ballpark. But there'll be a lot of other things that, that happen at that, uh, event venue. There'll be outdoor concerts, there'll be all kinds of outdoor events. Our investment in that deal as a county is that we gave a tax abatement to Coca-Cola so that they would, give them an incentive to leave that property and build out at the center.
Center court.
So, uh, that is our financial investment. And what that, actually, that abatement is, they're gonna pay the same amount of property taxes to the county that they did before they moved. They, we are abating the difference between what they paid now and, uh, what their new facility for 10 years. After 10 years, they'll pay the full amount of what their new facilities were.
I'll add a couple other comments, Judge, if that's okay? Um, so to Commissioner Church's comment about the tax abatement to Coca-Cola, that was not a unanimous vote. So you saw a lot of 5-0 votes as we saw the resolution and the minutes and those kind of things. That was a 3-2 vote that got that abatement. So that meant two of these commissioners did not support it at that time for Coca-Cola and for that abatement. The Ball Field, the questions that I often get asked in the community, what the county can do, why we even have a Ball Field today, is that's a community kind of fun, a community, uh, awareness. We do that to keep, keep something fun in, in just that local jurisdiction. And so we don't get any dollars. We don't make any dollars off of that. We have a lease, uh, that we currently lease out to Southern Independent. Uh, but other than that, there's no revenue coming back to the taxpayers. So you'll notice as we start to look at expenses on that property, I mean, we really need to be able to justify that because we're not getting any dollars back for providing those services. When the city takes this on, the multipurpose events venue, which again has been called the Ball Field, what they get is the sales tax. So if people coming down and spend money, they get percentage of the sales tax, as does AEDC, which is Amarillo Economic Development Corporation. So there's a dollar revenue stream that would go back to them if that works. What I also like to highlight about all of these projects is there is a footprint in, in the majority of downtown, but even goes up to Washington Street, that's called the TIRZ, and that is the footprint where all of this development is starting to happen. That could not have happened without Potter County. As a local jurisdiction, we had to approve that to establish the tiers. And what does that even mean and why does it matter? There's an account out there, it's called the TIFF, T-I-F, the TIFF Fund, where the local jurisdictions put money into this bank account. Potter County puts double into this bank account every year. And they use those dollars to give incentives to these projects coming in. So, um, the Excel project, that's got a lot of media attention recently. There's no doubt in my mind they'll be approaching tiers. So they talk a lot about tiers, but the money itself is in a bank account that Potter County contributes to every year. So when I talk about things of making sure that we have a presence and we have a voice, it's because we have dollars. We have your taxpayer dollars going into those funds. So we need to be aware of where that money is being spent. So I just wanted to add that, Judge. Thank you.
This'll probably put you to sleep, but, you know. Tiers is the, uh, tax increment reinvestment zone. And what it, all it does is it, it's the difference in what the, uh, value of the property was in 2006 and what, how that increases. It's that increase in, in revenue. We still get it, we still get the revenue up to what the 2006 level was. But everything above that now, as property values increase, that's the money that goes into this, uh, TIFF, the Tax Increment Fund. And that's what these businesses can apply to, get some of that money for landscape or other types of activities.
And then not to add to the sleep that's happening, 2036 is when this expires, uh, when the tiers expires. So one of the things that we continue to be interested, I continue to be interested, is if they are giving these dollars out, that they're giving them to private entities that are gonna be paying taxes in 2036 so that we have, have gained something 30 years from it being established. So through that, there's been a couple of projects. The hotel is a public and a private partnership. So that's the city and the hotel. Part of what's being vetted out is how much of that is gonna be taxable. Same thing on the parking garage. The city will own that. So we care a lot about private because they'll be paying the taxes in 2036 when this expires. If y'all want more detail, we can go in later.
Y'all look like you totally understand all what we just said.
They know.
We're, there's gonna be a test in a minute, so. Jason, what else you got?
Okay. Here's a, here's a chance to make up for that and be, and be interesting. They want to hear from each of you. How long have you been, uh, you know, a commissioner, judge? They want to know what prompted you, what motivated you to get into politics to do that? And what kind of path is there for these kids to follow in your footsteps?
Well, since I'm Commissioner Precinct 1, I'll go first. I always go first. I, uh, this is my seventh year as a commissioner and I will probably run again in 2016. I say probably, I'm a hundred percent. My, uh, particular precinct runs east, uh, rather west of the Canyon Drive and then from the, uh, Randall County line, uh, to the, uh, uh, well, what we want to call it, uh, Plains Boulevard, I guess we'll go, we'll go that route. But that's, that's about, basically where I am. I ran, uh, because I didn't like what was going on with the commissioner, uh, whose place I, I, I ran against, some of the decisions he was making. And, uh, I won't go into detail about it, but, uh, I had been a policeman for over 41 years and decided that, uh, if I didn't like it, uh, then I needed to do something about it. And I decided to run. And fortunately, I ran against an incumbent and, uh, won my election, uh, by 63% of the vote, which was, uh, very fortunate. And, uh, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Um, I'm Commissioner Morgia, Precinct 2, and I am three and a half years in office. I represent east and northeast Amarillo. And so as the judge said, we're elected in our precincts. I live actually two blocks away from the actual line. So when I decided to run, I really did have to get out the map and see where my street was and was I eligible to run. So I live close by Cap Rock High School. Uh, when I chose to run, I, uh, was appointed before I was elected, which is a little bit of an unusual story. I was 32 when I took my seat. I think I was the youngest woman to, uh, to run at the time. And my predecessor, Commissioner Manny Perez, who was the longest-serving county commissioner, had passed away unexpectedly. So, uh, the search was on respectfully, knowing that he was terminally ill. I put my name in the hat. I did a lot of prayer, uh, because I, I work full-time and I have kids and I'm busy and I, it had already been involved in the community and a lot of nonprofits that I believe in. But I chose to put my name in the hat. There were 11 of us trying to get the appointment and I went through the process. And it really is true that in one day, your whole life is different, just like that. Uh, I'll never forget it. I got the call when I was at the dentist office with my son and I grabbed one of those real estate books that are just always around because I didn't have anything with me and I was getting all these phone numbers where I needed to get my bond. Um, and I remember sitting down at the dentist office after I got the call and said, "You are the next commissioner. Be there tomorrow morning at nine. All the news stations will be there." Um, and I just sat down and thought, "Oh, my goodness, here we go." Uh, and I had spoke publicly often, but there is quite some, just something quite different about the light and the mic and the recording and the whole aesthetic of this experience. But, um, I was appointed and then I was running for office. I was committed to running for office. I had no political aspirations. It was actually a group that approached me, said, "Have you ever considered running?" After I learned about how much I wanted to help influence the future, I decided to run. And I had four opponents. And so it was a tough, tough race. Um, you really do forget to drink water, you forget to eat, all those things that you hear about. You really do, um, do that and every day feels like the same day. But I won with a 61% margin and, uh, had to run again. So I've had lots of elections just because of the way my seat fell. So I recently won four more years in office. And so I'm, I'm grateful to serve and thankful because I am born and raised in the precinct that I represent. So when I say I work for family, I really do work for family because a lot of them live in my precinct and I make sure they go vote. Thank you.
Okay. Well, mine's a little bit different. Uh, I've worked for the county for 25 years total. The last 20 years with my predecessor, Judge Ware. Uh, he had a stroke in 2010 and, uh, was unable to speak. So I was asked to run for this position. And through a series of events, some good, some bad, and some of you out there that know what, what all went on, know that that's true. I did run and I also had four opponents. And, um, it was certain that there would be a runoff. But just to pat myself on the back at the risk of breaking my own arm, uh, I will tell you that I won by 51% margin in, in the primary. I didn't have to have a runoff and I won all 16 precincts. So I think the, the people quoting my good friend Manny Perez, the people have spoken for that. And, um, I'm extremely grateful to be here. Like I said, I, I had experience from the beginning because I worked for Judge Ware for so many years. And so when I walked in January 2nd, starting my new term, or my first term as county judge, I already knew how to do the probates and the guardianships and the mental health and everything that go along with that job. So I, I do feel like, uh, it was, it was a God thing and I'm very, very proud to be here. So thank you.
This is the worst thing you can ever do is give a politician a microphone. But anyway, I'm Leon Church and I am county commissioner in Precinct 3. Precinct 3 includes from Colter West to the county line. And it's kind of just meanders around, but, uh, I have, uh, the northwest corner of Potter County. I've got, or, uh, Amarillo, I have West Cliff, the Woodlands. And then it goes up to Hastings, goes across east over to Lakeside and then down to the Randall County line, everything east and everything north. I have all the rural parts of Potter County. So Highland Park, River Road and, um, Bushland are all in, in my precinct. I appreciate you all being here. I was, uh, elected in, um, what, 2012? I have served for two and a half years. I, as was mentioned, it is a, uh, four-year term. My term will be up in 2016. I need to make a decision by the end of this year, so, uh, have to pray on that for a little bit. I, uh, retired from, uh, Texas A&amp;M University Cooperative Extension Service. I served 36 years working in that, uh, field. I have not, I was not born in, uh, Amarillo. I was not born in Texas. I was born and raised in Idaho, got my two degrees from University of Idaho. And I think, uh, my experiences throughout the country have given me a lot of, a lot of benefit. I've seen how, uh, local governments worked all over, uh, the western part of the, the United States. So I kind of know about, uh, county government. And so when I retired, I, um, took on a 12-year incumbent. And, uh, that was a, uh, a real effort. Because a, an incumbent is hard to be because of name recognition and all of that. And especially someone that's been in, in for 12 years. But the experience was fantastic because I got to go out, walk neighborhoods, meet people. And you always hear all these stories about, you know, people don't care. But I don't, I don't agree with that. People aren't asked usually. And when you stop at their door, tell them what you're doing and, uh, visit with them. They're, they, they, many of them told me, "You're the first one I've ever seen come to my house." So, uh, it's important. So if you're ever interested in running for an office, personal contact, going out, knocking on doors, introduce yourselves, that's important.
Uh, Commissioner Vaughn had to leave to go to a doctor's office, but let me reiterate what Leon Church just said. Uh, during my campaign, uh, it's, it's face-to-face, it's handshaking. So if you ever think about getting into politics, just don't think you can just pay your money and walk away. It is a hard, hard job. You do. I was telling this lady over here from Bushland, uh, I campaigned out there for, uh, four, two, two consecutive weekends, four days, and I walked 17 miles. I have a Fitbit that proved it. And, uh, I walked 17 miles knocking on doors. And same thing happened to me. They said, "You're the first person that's ever come out here and, and introduced themselves and, uh, and done the work." And it's hard work. So if you have any aspirations to doing it, just get, get your walking shoes on because it takes a lot of, a lot of work. Is there anything else?
I would add, Judge, that, um, we certainly need, we need you to be interested at some point in your life. We all like to assume other people are worried about those things, uh, but you really are the few... future and you really are the change. So if there's anything that tugs at your heart to want to change, whatever that is, I encourage you to not be afraid and not be afraid to be in an unknown environment. But often the question we get asked is, "Where's the youth?" And lots of the boards that I'm on is, everybody is hungry for what you bring, everybody's excited for what you bring to the future, but looking for you and seeking you out. So if that's something you're ever interested in, please know I feel confident to say this whole court would answer any question or get you in the right direction. You'll also have an opportunity during lunchtime in our breakout sessions, we have other elected officials that will be joining us. We're the governing body for the county, but all of those elected in their own right and great stories and good people that serve Potter County. So I encourage you to ask their story as well.
Probably one last group of questions dealing with, okay, I'm a senior today, I'm graduating here in a few weeks, and I want to enter into a career of politics. How do I get started? So you guys want to address that?
Run fast, the other way.
I would recommend that you become involved in a campaign, whether that's locally or on the state level. All of the candidates are hungry, as Commissioner Morgia said, for young people to help them. And what that does is open up a lot of doors for you to possibly work on their staff if they're elected or whatever. But that's a good way to get your foot in the door and that's what I'd recommend.
I had a campaign aide from WT that helped me and he was so thankful for the opportunity. You know, I didn't pay him anything, he was just there to be, to be my boy. I don't know, he did everything I needed, he did it for me and he was so happy to be there. The night of the primary, when I won the primary, he actually cried. He was so, so into it, so involved in the campaign, that he had tears because he was so happy because he worked very, very hard for me. So do that, get involved in something, get involved in someone's campaign, you'll learn a, you'll learn a heck of a lot.
I would certainly recommend that you run for city council, they're needing some folks over there. Stay away from county.
Well, I would agree with all of those in the campaign experience. I didn't have that luxury when I decided to run for office, so 99.9% of the people in my campaign had never done anything like that before. And I would just say, use your instinct, what makes sense, really common sense, it does drive at the end of the day. So what is it that you need to start to, what do you care about? Why are you choosing to run for office? Because that's your platform and that's what matters to you. And people will align if they can feel it. I have a mentor that calls it the fire in your belly. Once you start to feel something and feel like you want to be a part of that change, nothing will stop you. And if you try and you fail, as it says, "Try, try again," because the experience is something that is really, can't be described and you will be grateful for regardless, because you really are giving people a voice that don't have a voice today and that are kind of afraid to ask. And we're all afraid of unknown circumstances. So I, kudos to whoever asked the question and maybe is entertaining that. But what's always surprising to me is how few people know that you only have to be 18 years old and not convicted of a felon, but you can really start very early in your life. So I encourage you to do that.
Well, my final and serious note, y'all are affectionate to go to college and there are a lot of areas at college where politics is involved and that'd be a good place to start. Don't be afraid to say, "Yeah, you know, I'd like, I'd like to do something," whatever, whatever it might be at college. Take advantage of that situation and get a good start in maybe a political career.
I think one of the hardest things you'd have to do is step out of your comfort zone. You know, you get so comfortable doing what you're supposed to be doing, what you're, feel good doing, but when you, when you do something like this, you step out of it and you become a different person. I mean, you are in the limelight, your microphone stuffed in your face, you have a camera in your face. It is, eventually you get used to it. I did, so. Yeah, it's pretty easy now, but it's really hard. But so think about it, if there's something that you're thinking about and wanting to change, if there's something you don't like, stand up and say something. That's the first point, the first thing you know how to do.
Anything else? Any other questions, Jason?
Question I have is, is the food ready?
It looks like it's getting set up back there.
You have the answer, Jason, is the food ready?
What about any questions from anybody that didn't ask in Twitter? You're certainly welcome to just ask the question directly of the court.
Anybody, don't be shy.
Jason entered into politics right here.
There's one, I'm sorry.
You know, I think there's one thing that a lot of people don't know about county government. And that is that we are basically just an extension or an arm of the state legislature. Unlike city government, which is what they call a home rule type of government, they can do pretty much what they want. They can pass an ordinance or whatever. Unless the state tells us we can do something, we can't do it. So this is different than, than city government. But I think a lot of people have a misunderstanding that, that we can just do anything we want. I've been asked a lot of times, "What are you going to do with the junk out here, out in the countryside?" Well, our state legislature has never passed our ability to zone and to take care of those kinds of things. So we're limited, our hands are tied a lot of times. But anyway, I think that's something that's interesting to understand.
Okay, a couple of thank yous here. I want the people on the, oh, you have a question?
How does the majority of Potter County typically vote as a partisan wise?
Do you want to ask, do you want to say the question for everybody?
Okay, the question was, how does Potter County generally vote as far as political party or partisan wise? And it's heavily Republican.
But I would add that you have two members on the court that run on the Democrat ticket, myself and Commissioner Vaughn. So I say that just to say that we obviously have healthy debate up here, which is good, good governance.
It's good. Anything else from the students up here?
Okay. I'm just making sure.
Okay, I have a couple of thank yous. I want the committee, the employee appreciation committee to please stand to be recognized for the work that you've done. Please stand.
Right here, Stephanie.
Thank you so much to that committee for doing what they did to get this going. It's not easy to, it's like herding cats, you know, getting all the, all the schools. And thank you to the students and the teachers to, to step up and do this. And I hope that you're having a good time, I hope that you learned something, I hope that you didn't sleep through most of it. Lunch is ready, I think? No?
One other item that you forgot. They do have to write a report on this, it's a 500-word report, just so you know.
So is there anything, anything else that the kid, that any of y'all want to ask or add to, or is there something we can do better next time or anything at all? Nothing? Oh, yes, sir.
Yes.
I have a question. What is the age departments for running for mayor?
I'm assuming it's the same, 18.
He said yes. All right.
Okay, and students, thank you, thank you so much for getting involved, thank you for having a passion for this. We appreciate you coming to this today and I hope you learned something.
Yes. And for those sitting on the panel, so thank you for joining us up here. It's quite an honor for us to have you and thank you for speaking up.
The elective officials to sit with the kids and be there to answer any questions and, you know, have that time of fellowship during lunch.
Okay, good.
Ready?
Restrooms are to the men's room.
One, two, three, break.
Question, yes, we do have one here from Cap Rock. Yes, sir.
Oh, he's going to come up? Yes, sir.
So I was just wondering, what is the relationship between this sovereign institution and sovereign institution like the city of Amarillo or maybe even AISD? How does your policies and what you decide interact with what they're deciding? And how do you guys work together?
Well, I think it, from my perspective, it evolves. And sometimes there are good times and sometimes there are bad times. I think there's always an effort to stay in communication because it does the taxpayer well. For those that live in the city of Amarillo, you are the same taxpayer, whether you're paying taxes to the city or paying taxes to Potter County. So it is to all of our best interests to play nice and to understand at least where each other is coming from. In terms of policy, I would say our topics vary so widely. Really, from my end in office, the one topic that has all of us kind of discussing is the downtown development. But there's always room for improvement and there's always room for better communication.
Agree. We, we work together with, with those entities as close as we can. There are going to be times when we're opposite, opposite of one another, but we eventually get things worked out for the benefit of the community, for the benefit of the taxpayers. So it's overall, it's a good working relationship. Let me tell you a couple of specifics. We run the election this year, the election year we're about to have, those are Potter County people, within Potter County. Anywhere you go to vote, those are Potter County. The equipment you're using, the people, all of that is Potter County. So the county runs the election for both the city and the school districts, all the school districts in the county. Far as our detention center, a lot of the folks that are out there in detention are actually people who have committed offenses here in the city and they are arrested by those city policemen. That's a, that's a big partnership.
Can I ask you a question or?
Yes, but I kind of have like a question. So officials in AISD, for example, are elected?
The school board.
Okay. So I was asking specifically because I'm very interested in the reform that's going on in AISD. I heard that in the middle school, in elementary school, they were moving to where it's not subject-based, but rather top, topic-based education. And specifically me, I'm interested in doing some sort of politics when I grow up. And education is really important to me because I believe in order for you to be a productive citizen, you have to be informed and educated. So especially this committee, how much are you and what ways are you involved in education and the curriculum?
I can speak from, from my end, but not necessarily as a commissioner. I say it as a parent. I have a student that attends Bowie Middle School. And so as a parent, I became very involved in the curriculum as it relates to pre-AP classes. My son, my son came from the St. Mary's family and so we were very new to the school district this year. So he entered in sixth grade and we were interested in the advanced placement. There were only two offerings at Bowie, there were four at other campuses, Bowie and Travis, that I can speak to candidly here, there were two offerings. So we took that to the superintendent and said, "We want the same playing field." That was, it's a kind of a year-long process, but I'm happy to report that the fall of this year, Bowie will have five pre-AP classes and that will go to all of, all of the campuses, all of the districts. The teachers are going through advanced placement to position them for the pre-AP classes at Cap Rock. And I share that story as a parent and as a community member. So you don't have to be an elected official to be engaged in that change. My advice to you would be to get some time, potentially with our new superintendent and our outgoing superintendent, but really your school board members. You have three that will, the four candidates, but three seats that are open. So I think it's a topic that your school board should be able to speak to. Those are public forums, they have agenda items at the very end that the public can come and speak and ask those questions. So I encourage you to do that, but you don't have to be an elected official to do that. You can be a concerned citizen and ask some questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Judge, I will just say after lunch, we, our first tour is going to be here at the Santa Fe Building. Sherry Ailer, our tax assessor, collector, Sherry, are you here, Sherry? Oh, hello. She's going to lead our first tour. And then we'll make some announcements during lunch about logistics and transportation to get us to our sheriff's admin building. And Sheriff, will you raise your hand so they all see you? You're very tall, so there you go.
Tallest guy.
Tallest guy, no, David Harver is taller. And then we'll go to the district, we'll go to the county courthouse. So we'll have an opportunity to see several of the buildings today, but logistically, we'll make some announcements during lunch about getting us to the first or the second tour location.
Okay, again, thank you so much for coming. You have a break time right now to run to the restroom or whatever you need to do before they get this ready and we'll talk to you in just a little while.
Thank you.
Thank you.